Good evening and welcome to the Village Board of Trustees special meeting. Today is Monday, October 18th. It is now 5:00 PM. Please dance for the pledge. The pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic, which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Let us remain standing and think about recently departed Secretary of State, former Secretary of State Colin Powell, and also Matty Nick-Pon. May they rest in peace. Thank you. Roll call vote. Trustee Alfred.
Present.
Trustee Barone.
Present.
Trustee Corrigan.
Present.
Trustee Sauberman.
I saw him a moment ago.
He's there.
I don't know, he might have his thing. He's on the phone, it looks like. Fred, if you can hear us. He's present. You can see him.
Yes, he is present. I just want to make sure he's able to hear us.
Fred, can you hear us? I'll text him or something. Let me see. If I can. Let's see. Fred. Sauberman. Answer. Zoom. Fred, we're calling you.
Perhaps you can see a chat?
Yeah, we could try that. Let's see. Chat, here we go. So I'll just send it to him. To Fred Sauberman. Please. Respond. I just sent it privately to him, but I'm gonna send it to everyone in case it comes in in a different spot. Fred. Please respond.
I got it.
We see that.
Yep.
Okay. I sent him a private message and then I sent him the public one, but he's still not responding. I'm not sure. I could call him on his cellphone. Let's see. Audio. I texted him as well. He didn't respond.
That, and then, yeah.
He's right. I still see him.
Hi Fred, we're trying to talk to you on this meeting. Can you please respond? You can't get the audio. Okay. Just there's, make sure your volume is up. Make sure you selected use internet audio.
Can you hear us?
He said he cannot hear us.
No, he can't hear.
Wait, wait. Can you hear us on the Zoom, Fred? Can you hear us on the Zoom? You can't hear. Make sure your volume's up on the Zoom. And he did just get a new computer. Everyone. Uh, I think there's a telephone number you can call in, right? Is that an alternate?
Uh.
Yeah.
Can he, Rob, Rob, can he use his cellphone on speaker mode? Would that work?
Uh, I guess. I'd probably better off if he called in.
Okay.
Yeah, Fred, can you call in on like the 646 number or something like that? There's the six, yeah, the six. You know, one of those numbers. There's a one tap mobile. Can you call in on one of those, please? Yes, 646-518-9805. You got that?
So he needs, he might need the meeting ID and everything.
Yes, and then you'll need a meeting ID. Once you dial that, you'll need the meeting ID. And then there's a passcode. You might need that as well. It's on the, this is all on the agenda. If you printed the agenda.
All right, 646-518-9805.
Yes. Yes, and then you need a passcode, 599174.
What is that long number you set for?
There's a meeting ID, there's a phone number, then a meeting ID, and then a passcode. You need all those things. Please call in. We're waiting. We're delaying the meeting because of you.
Thank you very much.
I just told you it's eight, I'm sorry, 599174 is the passcode that you'll need. That's the last thing you'll need to enter. 599174.
No, you gotta use the mouse. Lower left corner.
Fine.
No, keep going. Left, left corner, all the way over. All right.
Well, hopefully he can get on soon. What I can say is Fred did just get a new computer, so he might not know how to use it correctly.
Okay, we'll just wait for Fred.
And while we're waiting, I'm just looking at the agenda. You might want to do the two, three, and four. First and then the comp plan, because that's more.
Is Michael on?
Yeah.
Yes. Michael Janito. Yes, if you mind reviewing the resolution authorizing the expenditure of the ARPA 21 funds, please.
Yes, Mayor. Basically, we received $564,460 in ARPA 21 funds in the summer of 2021. And with that, as you know, that we have committed $11,000 towards COVID-19 improvements in the facilities, predominantly the Village Hall, to avoid the COVID-19 spread. We also have committed $130,000 to the two fire chief vehicles, and $50,000 towards a $250,000 garbage truck with plow, which is otherwise supported with a grant of $200,000 from Senator Melnick. Eklund Melnick. And with that, the Public Works, as well as the Police Department, have submitted some vehicle requests, and as well, we have $70,000 in upgrades for the village network. That's for the Village Hall buildings, the Village Hall Fire Department's wastewater plant and water plant. And the total of those comes to $363,315. That will leave us a balance of approximately $10,000 in the ARPA 21 funds that are not committed or expended. And so we're recommending that these proposed uses be agreed to and adopted by the Village Board.
Okay. So I have the resolution authorizing $363,315 of ARPA 21 funds for various purposes. Do I have the resolution? Is that correct?
Yes.
Do I have a motion on the resolution?
Motion, trustee.
I shall move.
Do I have a second?
Second, trustee Albert.
Is there any discussion on the resolution and the authorization of the ARPA fund?
Mike, this is the exact list that you sent out to us as an email, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I asked Mike if that was the email and vehicle listing and equipment listing that he had previously sent out to us.
Okay. Yes. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Uh, just, uh, for the record, Mr. Sauberman, I think I muted you by mistake. You might have to, uh, either call back or Mike, do you know, is it star or something?
Star nine, I think. Isn't it?
To unmute on a phone?
Yes.
Star nine, Fred, try star nine to unmute. There you go. I think we lost you.
It looks like he's muted now. Do star nine again, Fred.
It's, I think it's.
All right, I'm muted. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good, yeah.
Star six, by the way.
Okay, good. We got it wrong. Good to know.
Okay.
All right, great. Thank you. So Fred, just to bring you up to speed, we reviewed the ARPA 21 spending, and the resolution was adopted by the board.
Yeah, I voted yes, by the way.
Okay. And now, now we're moving on to appointment of parking enforcement aid part-time. Appointing Robert Conklin as parking enforcement aid part-time. Do I have a motion?
I shall move.
Trustee Sauberman, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Corrigan.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Fred, if you can put your phone on speaker, then you don't have to hold it up in your ear.
Well, I think, okay, let me try that.
Okay, next resolution, appointing Stephen Dunn, police officer, part-time. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Barone. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Any opposed? Okay. Okay, next up is Max from Nelson Pope and Voorhees.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, how are you doing?
Doing well, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you all for making yourselves available. We're excited to get started here on, on the Suffering Comp Plan. And in sort of finalizing details of the contract and preparing for that effort, I felt it was important to make a, or have a discussion regarding whether the Village Board, which, which is how we read the RFP, is desirous and has the time to be directly involved with the comp plan, or if it makes sense to appoint a commission or a committee. We prepared our proposal to do either, but we sort of just wanted to make sure because in a lot of communities where we have undertaken the plans directly with the Village Board, it is a large time commitment and we just want to make sure that, that everybody has considered what is going to be involved and knows the pros of, pros and cons before they, they start out the process.
So that's for something for you just to touch on briefly, the pros and cons of the Village Board being the lead or creating an independent body.
Right, so I, I would say the, the biggest advantage to the board directly undertaking the comprehensive plan is that it's your plan. So regardless of who makes it or who, who goes through the progress, process of reviewing studies, reviewing zoning, reviewing land use, reviewing housing data and, and market trends. It, it's essentially going to lie with the Village Board at the end to adopt it. So it, it is the Village Board that at the end is going to say what's in the plan. Uh, so to some extent, it's nice if you have the time and, and the capacity and the interest for you to be involved in, in sort of baking the cake. Uh, the disadvantages are also obvious in a lot of ways, one of which is it's, it's a big commitment of time. And I would say it's, it's on the realm of, of two hours, two to three hours, at least once a month over the term of the contract. And that wouldn't be as an agenda item, you know, on a regular meeting day, that would, that would be typically what we look for in terms of just to, to work on the comp plan. You know, some of the other advantages to a committee is that you can populate it with disparate interests. So if there's a variety of interests that, that you normally deal with throughout the community, those are, are great resources to put on a committee so that you can have a business interest, you can have an environmental interest, you can have a housing, a person interested in housing, and, and all those people at the table going through the plan as it's being developed. And that's typically what we, we work with is oftentimes it'll be somebody from the planning board, somebody from the zoning board, one or two trustees, and then some community members who are active in the community and, and involved with organizations. That is one way that we can enhance our community outreach because we are involving the public directly in the preparation. And oftentimes, if you put the right people on a committee, those people can reach out to their networks and drive interest in the process. So it can be a little bit more of a wider foundation for the comp plan. And again, in the end, it's, it's always going to be the Village Board that adopts this plan. So regardless of what you get from the committee, you know, and you can check in at various points such as when a vision is, is created, that's a great time to check in and give that committee guidance. You know, you guys are going in the right direction or we're not so sure. Well, you've come up here with a vision. And then go back to, you know, they can go back to the substance and then come back to you with a draft plan, then you can weigh in on the draft plan. So, so that's, that's really what I think the advantages are of, of each side. And again, it, it really does go back, I think, in a larger respect as to what the Village Board's time capacity is.
Uh, Max, if I could just, if I could just, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Bonnie.
Sure. I was just going to say that I, you know, when you create a committee, they're open to, they're subject to the open meetings law. So, you know, if the full board is participating, it has to be properly noticed. That's why we should have a schedule. The same is true also for a committee. They would also have to have the meetings noticed, try to hold them on a regular day. The other maybe primary difference is that once you have a committee, the committee has to have its own, almost like a public hearing, it's really a public meeting, before they transmit it to you as the comprehensive plan that they're recommending to you. Uh, so there's an extra public meeting involved in that process as well that has to be held at the committee level. Once it's, as Max has said, once it's forwarded to you, you can amend it any way you like. It's ultimately the Village Board's document to adopt. Thank you.
So if I could just jump in before we hear from the board members, the, the one, and the reason why, you know, Max and I had emailed on this, you know, about what the Village heard, and that's why we're, you know, doing it this way. It's really up to the board to decide how it wants to do it. My inclination, frankly, going through this recently in another municipality, it took a while just to get the board to try to agree on who would be on the committee. That took a while. And well, who else is going to be on? What about this person? And is that, you know, so in a way, it, it, it's all public. Um, so, and the public can participate. When you have a meeting, you certainly could ask the public, okay, you know, what say you on this issue? Or are we going down the right path here or there? Again, with the size of the Village and Board, it seemed to me, this is my two cents, not necessarily legal thing, it seemed to me might make sense for the Village Board to take ownership earlier. What we did in another municipality was, and Max, that's what I was going to ask you. There was almost like a, a subcommittee of, of, you know, that, you know, that, whatever it was. For example, the group that you mentioned, either the mayor or supervisor, a trustee, or, you know, a board member, you know, the attorney perhaps, a planning board member, zoning board member, et cetera. Uh, almost more internal to kind of work on a draft, maybe direct with you, and then go to the board. But you know, that's why I leave it to the board. I think, I don't think you go wrong either way. But that was my, my kind of thought on it was the board versus a committee. The, the reason, originally the other municipality was going to do a committee, they couldn't agree on who to put on the committee was a problem. You know, so I, I, that's just one, one factor, but I'll leave it to the board.
So I like the idea of keeping it internal with the Village Board, creating the committee within, internally within the village and with, you know, we have the access and the accessibility to the resources that we need to work with Nelson Pope. Be it the, the zoning board, the planning board, the building inspector. So those resources are right at our hands. And it would be readily accessible as opposed to a committee trying to develop that relationship with the, the members, you know, the employees here and ascertaining that information. I like that that we have it and then form a subcommittee or solicit input that way.
So Max, how would that exactly work, Max? Is it, are we insured that each board member is given the opportunity to attend the meetings that you're having at all points in time? How, how does that all pan out?
So i- if the Village Board is preparing the plan, uh, what we would look for is for, um, you know, the, the board to be available monthly. We would be preparing reports, mapping data, existing conditions data. Um, we would be setting public meetings, um, you know, where the, the board would be reaching out to the public for input. Um, and those will happen on a, on a monthly basis. So for example, the kickoff meeting, we would be reviewing documents, provide some advanced information, meet, go over schedule, go over venues, go over a, a public outreach plan. How are we going to activate the public? Are we going to have a survey? Are we going to have an event at, at a street fair? I don't even know if you guys are still doing street fairs right now.
We just did one.
You just did one, right. Great. So, um, you know, are we going to have an event at, at, at an out, you know, at a scheduled already event? We would work through all those things. We would come back. We would write minutes of the meeting back to the board so that there's, there's information. And we would be preparing a report in advance of the second meeting, which would probably be something about demographics and land use and, and a lot of maps. Uh, and then we would meet, go over that, schedule the first public outreach meeting. And then be sort of, it, it would be a pattern of we would provide a deliverable to the board. The board would review it. We would meet, discuss, make some decisions, and then come back the following month.
So you're not having, so you're not having meetings throughout all the month? You're going to do all the work and then present it to the board as a whole?
No, no, this is, this is a, a iterative process. So we would be wanting to meet on a monthly basis through the contract term with the board. So that you guys are not getting a package at the end. You're creating the package as we go along.
Okay, I guess. Go ahead, Charlie. I'm sorry.
Would it be fair to say that it would fit in your model if we were to make a commitment that the Monday following the regular Village Board meeting, we would have this meeting the following Monday every month, and it would take care of the comprehensive plan project?
What, what meeting is the regular board meeting?
They're on, they're the first Monday of every month.
Let's discuss that date, Charlie. Let's not, I, I want to understand how it works first before we set up a meeting.
So, so yeah, I mean, so generally, that's how it would happen. I mean, the public outreach dates, um, those months you might have a, a month off. For example, if we wanted to do a public outreach meeting on the weekend, uh, one month, we might not meet separately that month to go over items for the comp plan. But other than that, typically it is a monthly meeting over, over the, the term of the contract.
Okay, so I don't think I was asking my question correctly. So besides, no, I think it was the way I described my question. So during the month when you're doing all your work, are we able to be in the meetings that you're in? Like, are you going to have separate meetings with our planning depart, our planning board, our zoning board and all that?
So if we don't have a committee, um, we would need to, uh, you know, sort of reach out to a member of the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, and that would likely be, the way the RFP set it up would be that the primary contact for the village would be the building inspector. Um, so they would be our liaison to those boards. So we would, we would either ask to interview those people directly, or we would provide questionnaires for them, or, or, you know, zoning board, for example. Typically, we ask for, you know, three to six months worth of agenda items and go over what the zoning board is dealing with.
Okay.
Um, I believe two of you were on the zoning board, right?
Yes.
Already. So you, you guys have some knowledge about what happens and what the village is dealing with. Planning board, the same thing. What, what are your, what are your complications with the code that exists today? Get an idea of what they're looking for. Those are detail items that, that typically happen a little bit further down in the process. Getting to a vision is really our first, our first goal. So the way we structure our program is we go out to the public fairly early and want to hear from the public on a high level to develop a vision, get to a vision. So, you know, we have an early meeting, we're preparing existing conditions, making some conclusions based on the existing conditions, and looking within the first, let's say, four, four months or so to have a draft vision and goals and objectives identified that will guide us through the rest of the process. And then we can drill down a little more, you know, fine grain with, with the ZBA and the Planning Board and the DPW. I'm sorry, yeah, you have a DPW. Public Works, Parking Enforcement, what, whatever other, the Police Department, whatever other village agencies we need to go out to to get either information or, or get an idea of needs, we can do that sort of in the following four months or so.
Okay. I mean, I'm, I'm more than willing to do more than two hours a month on this. I'm, I'm pretty passionate about this project. So that's why I was asking about, um, you know, the meetings that you're going to be presenting while you're gathering all your information. So
Yes.
No. That's where my question, why I was asking those questions.
Okay. Did, um, so did I answer it everything okay, or?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good.
Max, I have a question for you.
Yes.
You know, we're paying you to make a plan, and yet in the end you say, you know, this is the village's plan. We, we would like to present it as, you know, our paid plan to, you know, that you gave us. Not our plan, but your plan that we're presenting to the public. That's what we're paying you for.
Well.
Well, we, we prepare the plan. But we, we're, this is a collaborative effort, and we need to know what the preferences of the community are. And then ultimate, and then ultimately there's a balancing of, of various interests. Um, so we literally prepare the plan, a consultant. You know, we format it, we write it, we prepare all the maps. We do all of that for you, but we call it your plan because ultimately you are the entity responsible for adopting it and implementing it.
Of course.
Fred, you could certainly ask for recommendations along the way. There may be a point where, you know, do we go, you know, this way, that way, which way do we go on this? And ask, you know, your, the planners, what they think, but ultimately that decision is up to the board.
Right.
Which is again, another reason why I suggest the board be kind of on the ground floor on it, you know, because ultimately, ultimately it is going to be your plan. We prepared by them, but you have to vote on it and adopt it.
Right. You, you may have a, you may have a specific vision, or you may have, let's say, a, a challenge or an issue to address. So we will give you alternatives of how we think, based on our experience, it could be addressed in the plan. You, you'll, you'll have the option of picking and choosing or maybe keeping two or three alternatives of how something can be responded to in the plan to address an issue or a challenge. But we give you those ideas. We don't say, okay, what do you want? You know, we, we, we are getting your feedback. We're giving, you're, we're getting your input. You know, we do strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, analyses. We listen to the public, um, and we distill all that and come up with recommendations, but ultimately you know the village best and, and you can pick and choose how you think we can best achieve the vision.
Okay. I understand.
It's great.
A little very general, but I understand.
We'll get to specifics.
If, if I was to write a plan for, for Suffering, um, I, I bet you, you wouldn't like it, Fred. So, you know, instead, we're going to work with you and give you the plan that you want. And, and it's presented as, you know, Suffering's plan, not Nelson Pope and Borhe's Plan for Suffer. So.
Okay.
Which will, which will include public input. You know, you'll hear from the public on, you know.
The, the written version of the plan would say that it was prepared by Nelson Pope and Borhe's though, is that correct? Okay. So someone reading it, someone reading it wouldn't say, oh, this was prepared by the trustees, you know, or something, because obviously we're not, you know, savvy enough to.
Yeah.
We could use that verbiage. Usually what I like to put on my, my documents is prepared with the assistance of or or prepared with assistance by.
Yes, okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're prepared. We've done prepared for. Yeah, and it would be the Board of Trustees, prepared by Nelson Pope and Borhe's. And then we have acknowledgements, acknowledgements page of everybody that was involved in the, in the process that you want to acknowledge as having participated.
That's fine.
My question now is, the building inspector is going to be the chairman of this uh, committee? Did I hear that?
He's going to be our, our daily contact at Village Hall. So when we're seeking information or looking to coordinate with your boards, we're doing that through the building inspector, yes.
Probably a liaison.
Right. You know, I just, I, I'm going to throw it out there for Ed and the board. If, I don't know if you want to make that, you know, either Steve or, or you could do it through the clerk's office. Uh, you know, Max, you, have you done it through like a clerk's office also or is the building inspector make more sense?
Um, it, it really can be, uh, I would say through either. Uh, it just needs to be somebody that sort of is in contact with everybody and has a, a, a good working relationship with them. Um, sometimes when we're working directly with the Board of Trustees, it's the mayor. Um, sometimes it, 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 it is the village attorney. It's the person, I would say, who, who is the center and, and sort of touches uh, all the, all the varying departments and boards on, on a fairly frequent basis.
And, and the person who wants to take responsibility before being the liaison.
Do we have to make that decision this evening?
No.
You can think about it.
That can be something that you decide at the kickoff meeting certainly.
Yeah, that way we have time to talk to people and see if they have time to put that in their schedule before we just say, tag your it. And by the way, we just gave you a lot more work.
Yeah. What's the name of our building inspector?
Steve Connolly.
Okay. I personally don't know him, but that's okay. I'm new.
All right, that's something that we're going to have to uh, kick around and decide. Um, so what, what do you need from us this evening? Other than scheduling a kickoff meeting, putting together um, the commission, the, the, either the Board of Trustees with sub-commissions or an outside um, committee?
Yes, that's, that's the guidance we're looking for is first, how do you want to proceed? Is, will it be the village board? Just five members? Will it be? You know, one, one thing that, I don't know if it worked well, but um, Chestnut Ridge is, is wrapping up theirs. They did the village board and added the planning board chair and a member of the public and called it a committee. Um, I'm not sure that was a hundred percent the best way. Um, you know, in, in Montgomery, we just uh, wrapped one up where uh, their committee was two, two town board members, the planning board, zoning board, ARB. And then I think it was about uh, three at-large members. So one was a development-minded person, one was an environmentally-minded person. And, and uh, they had villages up there. So they had a couple of village uh, representatives. Um, that, that's in certainly another way. And then uh, in, in other communities, it's just the board and nothing else. So I, I'm not sure we could work with a subcommittee of the board where it's just two or three. I, I don't think we've ever done that.
Yeah, I think I may have given confusion on that. When I said it, Max will be working day to day, again, either with the mayor's office, the village attorney's office, the building department. So that's what I meant in terms of, of.
Yeah, the day to day, we certainly can have that.
Group. I mean, if, if, you know, he contacted, you know, let's say the village attorney and then uh, wanted to have a discussion, like a conference call with the village attorney and the planning board chair, you know, something like that. That, that's what I mean in terms of.
Subcommittee, yeah.
Committee, it's not a, it's not a committee per se, but it's more like an internal, um, you know, internal discussion. So yeah, the decision tonight is, you want it to be the village board? Or do you want to create a separate committee? That's really what Max is looking for now.
And, and I think meeting day is good too. So, so if we can set a meeting day for the kickoff and, and when, you know, going forward, a date that we can put in our calendars and reserve, that'd be great.
Would it make sense to, for the, it to be the village board and the department heads that are needed? Like the DPW, planning, zoning? And the village board?
You, you could do that. I mean, it would, it, it would get a little complicated, I think, because if the full village board is meeting, that's a village board meeting. And if they're meeting as part of a larger committee, that's also a, a committee meeting. Um.
So if we just keep it the village board and bring in representatives as need be, that's, that's the easiest solution as far as not to complicate things and get the project rolling in the right direction?
Oh, oh, I'll defer or, or I'll, I'll ask Bonnie to weigh in, but you know, my, my gut and my um, experience so far is probably the two most efficient and, and best ways to go is either it be the village board or it be a member, uh, a committee of seven uh, to eleven members with two board members on it. So it's, to me, that, those are the, the best practices and.
I think village board easiest.
Yes, I agree. I agree with you, Charlie.
Right, because you need, you need decisions made and, you know, you're the elected representative, you know. One of five votes, everybody votes and.
That sounds.
I will say that um, where, and so this is the interesting part, where a village board is well-aligned with its community and you pick members from the public. Typically, the plan will reflect the preferences of the village board. But we have been involved in certain situations where you, you just essentially pick people that you know that they're members of the public and you ultimately sometimes get a document that you have to wholesale edit because it doesn't reflect what you really wanted. So if, if you want to be, you know, in charge of the process, you know, the village board, um, you know, that's definitely a common way that these plans are put together. Um, because you really do need to give consideration to the committee that you put together. And if you think that's going to be a long process, um, or if you think that, you know, you won't know how to populate it, then I would definitely stick with the village board.
And, and we're bringing others in for their opinion, their professional opinions and also their educational per, you know, like we do, we do have one of these that I can think of off the top of my head that is very involved in the village that depicts each one of those groups that you mentioned. But it would be, so they will be involved, just not on every single item. The items that pertain to them were their sub- subject matter experts.
Right.
Yeah.
And the public.
Their stakeholders.
Yes.
Right. Just like anything, just like anything you vote on, uh, you know, folks will give their opinion and then it's up to the board to decide which way to go.
Yeah, we, we have, you know, again, lots of ways of reaching out to various groups. We met, like in Carmel, we've met separately with Chamber of Commerce. They have a very large group over there in the town of Carmel. Um, we also did a huge uh, online survey and we ended up with over two thousand responses, you know, from the town. So, and, and we asked strategic questions. So there's many, many ways of engaging the public and engaging stakeholders. You may want us to meet with particular property interests, um, you know, key parcels that are owned by key, you know, entities. So it's, it's, you know, we work with you as the village board to get the input and information we need in considering how this plan is going to come together and, and how it meets the needs of, of the village of Suffer and its population.
Now, when you run a big survey with two thousand responses, you take care of all the logistics of compiling that data?
Yes.
Yes.
We like to do it. We like to, you know, we use, the, the big one is Survey Monkey. Um, when you put those together, uh, you know, you're able to download the information into Excel spreadsheets, easily put charts together, um, do data analysis and there are a variety of tools that we can use, but we, we try to do it um, online. Uh, you know, so that we have, you know, really great handle on, you know, instant information and being able to quantify that information.
And that would be one meeting probably uh, would be devoted just to making sure that the, the board is on uh, onboard with the, the survey comments or, or questions. So just going through that can be a long process. How, how you word questions and, and what exactly uh, you ask?
Yeah, what you want to ask your, your population, what's important to them, what they want in terms of a vision, how they see the future of suffering in ten years. You know, what are its needs? And it, and it can range from recreation to utilities to land uses, you know. Uh, we want to focus in on what you want to ask, um, you know, your citizens.
Perfect.
Good.
All right, so I don't know that you need a formal vote, but if you want to take a straw poll with, I mean, if everybody wants to let the village board or a separate committee?
I think the village board sounds more uh, feasible, you know, like I said in the beginning, I'm going to have the direct contact with the Nelson Pope and then we'll develop the plan together. We have the resources available to us. We'll have the outside uh, experts come in. Um, I think that's a step in the right direction right now.
And so do I.
Agreed.
Yeah, village board.
Great. Yeah, great. Now, uh,
You have your answer.
When, when would you like uh, uh, us to be ready for a kickoff?
I would suggest that it be the Monday after the regular village meeting.
So that would be November eighth.
That's the regular village meeting.
Well.
It's the Monday after the regular village meeting. That's a different.
This month, it happens to be the eighth is the first meeting. So the fifteenth would be the meeting of this meeting.
Okay, it's, it's just because of election day?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So um, typically.
November eighth, I'm in Montgomery, Max.
No, it'll be the fifteenth for, for this meeting.
Oh, fifteen, sorry.
Yeah.
Good.
It's a good. It's a good night for me. I can, I can do that.
I have to, I have to check, hang on.
And what time would we recommend?
Um, it's going to be an hour meeting or two? How long a meeting would it be?
Two hours in most cases. Um.
Can we, can we try for six o'clock?
Pardon?
Can we try for six o'clock?
I, I can, I actually prefer earlier meetings, but uh, usually the board likes uh, seven, but if you guys can do six, I'm, I'm happy.
Well, does it have to be in person or can it be remote?
Well, it will be.
Okay, we can do either. I don't, I don't have my November schedule yet, but remote is always easier for me.
So why don't we say the first meeting in November to you get your schedule, Steve? I know you've been so busy and crazy. So we can, Rob, do we have to make the meeting the same way all the time? Like can, for example, can we say November meeting, we'll do Zoom? And perhaps in December, we do that live and, you know, we have like a hybrid back and forth?
Yeah, as long as it's uh, no, as long as it's noticed properly, you can, yeah, you can do both. And you might want to do both. Some you might want to have remote. You might want to have some in person. Some folks might prefer going in person.
I think, I think the Zoom um, goes to the beginning of the year, the ability to use Zoom for public meetings. Yeah, so after that, you know, we are, we will have to see what the state, um, you know, imposes upon everybody, but at this point there's flexibility in how you want to do it for certain.
But yeah, you're not committed. Yeah, I'm sorry, bud. You're not committed. Once you do Zoom, you have to do it the whole way through. It's, you know.
Okay.
And, and in terms of timing, you know, if you want to do five o'clock, you know, if you want to do six o'clock, it really comes down to your schedule because, you know, we know that you're often volunteers and you have a day, you know, job and you might get home at six o'clock, want to grab a quick bite. So it really comes down to your preferences of when you think you'd like to hold a meeting.
Okay, so we could, we could set the meeting and notice the meeting and before we do that, the, the board will be aware of the time. I mean, it seems like six PM, five or six or seven PM, and then we'll just firm that up before the eighteenth and before we know.
Why don't we, can we ask now? I mean, Charles or Steve, you have a preference?
He doesn't know his schedule.
I don't have my schedule. I mean, in case, depending on what's going on, seven o'clock's always easier for me than anything earlier, but today it was not a problem.
You also have to consider the election at the same time. So if you set a meeting now, things may change.
Right, but in any case, uh, we're talking the next meeting's the fifteenth of November.
Yes.
So that doesn't, that the election is not relevant to that date.
Correct.
Yeah, we could shoot for, for, I, I guess whatever works best for everybody, but I'm always in favor of doing it a little bit early if we can make it. And not have to stress.
Wait, and we can, and we can be flexible. I, I mean, if we're going to have a meeting on a, on a Monday evening and you want to start this month at six and next month at seven, as long, that's more of a headache for Rob, uh, noticing these things than getting the uh, the legal notice done. But for us, it's, it's just fine. We can be flexible.
You'll know your um, schedule, Steve.
Uh, I may not know till like the last week of October.
Oh, okay.
Can we, I mean, can I suggest we pick a time now if we have to change for Steve? Uh, we could do that?
Sure.
Sure.
Is that okay? Five or six PM?
Well, I mean, I, I'll say six. I mean, five is definitely going to be almost difficult.
Okay. All right, six PM. Is everyone good with six PM?
Six PM.
Thank you, Steve.
So that's November fifteenth.
November fifteenth, six PM on Zoom.
Yeah.
And, and this will be uh, set up by, by you, Rob, or would you like us to set them up?
Uh, it's up to you. I mean, I could set it. I, I, I guess I'll set it up because uh, then I could give it to Lisa Ann so she can publish it. And I'll, I'll send the invite to everyone.
The, the only thing, I, I don't know if it matters, but just want to let you know, we have uh, the webinar set up if, if you'd like, which is a bit of a different format.
You know what? Then why don't you do it and send Lisa Ann, you can send Lisa Ann the info where she can publish it. That's perfect.
And, and would, if that's something that uh, the board might prefer where, I mean, right now, uh, the difference would be all the uh, village board members and consultants and people attending officially would be on the screen and attendees that are in the audience uh, would not show up on the screen. That's sort of the difference between the webinar and the meeting format of Zoom. Uh, is there a preference?
Hmm.
Well, again, it goes back to, I don't think every meeting is, you're having public input. So.
Right.
You know, again, depending upon the meeting.
Yeah.
You know.
Now, I'm pointing over to you, Rob, because you're on my left. I'm agreeing with you and you're on my left.
And I know from, from my perspective, it's always, it's always nice to know who's attending the meeting, public or, or, you know, whatever. It's always good to know who's on the meeting.
You, you would be able to see that um, as, as in it, as a um, panelist. That's what.
I see.
If you're on the screen, you're a panelist and you can review the list of attendees.
I see. Okay, okay.
The difference would be one attendee couldn't see who the other attendees are. The difference would be one attendee couldn't see who the other attendees are.
That's fine. They don't need to.
Okay.
They definitely don't need to. I think that's really just something useful for the board.
You, you can also, we have required at times to have people, before they get the Zoom link, they have to request it. They have to give their name and contact information, and then you can send them the link if you want to know who might be attending or participating. I don't know that it, if it's, if it's worth doing that, but you can do that as well. Well, we, and we've, we've done it, and I'll, I'll tell you in the beginning, especially in the beginning of Zoom. We're using WebEx. We did it to avoid disruptors getting on. So, but that's up to you.
Couple of those in the beginning too.
We, we've had a couple here and there, but I think 99% of the attendees are fine, you know, I mean, you get that one crazy person now and then. Uh, but I, my own preference is to make it as easy as possible for the public to attend and not create onerous. You know, they have to submit a request and this and that to get approved. It, it's just, it's a lot of, a lot of check and balance for just attending a public meeting. I think public meetings should be a public meeting that anybody should be able to attend very quickly. That's my opinion.
And we do truly want their input because it's not just our village, it's everyone's village, you know?
Yeah.
Sure.
Agreed.
Okay, so yeah, I will set that up as a webinar with a, one link address that anybody can attend on.
And how will you, how will you know then which one is for the panelists? You'll.
So there's, there's two ways that I've done it in the past. One is you can send out separate panelist invites, which are unique to each person.
Okay.
Or you can promote from the attendees, which is typically how I do it. Where I would, you know, you all have your names on the screen here, and I would promote you based on your name.
I see.
And if, if it was somebody impersonating you, I could kick them back down once I saw that.
Okay.
I don't know how many people want to impersonate this group, honestly.
I don't think anyone wants the responsibility.
I think we're pretty safe to say no one's going to try that one.
Okay, great. I agree, Joe.
Very good. Well, thank you very much for your time. Is there any other questions you have for us before? Yeah, this is an exciting one for us. Bonnie and I, Bonnie and I have been working, you know, before we were involved with work for NPV, we did work for Stu Turner and Robert Genislaw. So I think Bonnie did a, a plan for Suffering back in 1999.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah, it was the conservation plan. That's how you ended up with your street trees and your, your lighting ballards. And in fact, someone came in and updated that plan, another consulting firm, but we first put it together. It was great. And then definitely I worked with Jack Keough and, and his crew when he was the planning board chairman for the planning board. So a lot of history there. When Avon came in, you know, we were around. The addition to the hospital, the library, worked on a lot of great projects. Yeah, a lot of projects we did.
And I grew up in Mala, so. You were downtown.
That's right.
All right, well, we look forward to working with you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to take a vote to adjourn Ed?
Motion to close the meeting?
Motion trustee Corrigan.
Second trustee Barone.
All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Have a great night.